Ladies and gentlemen, I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone Planning Commission on May 19th, 2020. This is a rescheduling of a meeting that was originally scheduled for March 17th, 2020, and the same hearings that were going to be at that meeting will be heard tonight. The, uh, the members of the Planning Commission are appointed by the Gladstone City Council and serve as volunteers. I would like the city recorder, please, to call the roll.
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Malachi.
Here.
Commissioner Poole. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Pat Smith.
Here.
Chair Milch.
Here.
So it appears, it appears we do not have Mr. Poole or Williams have connected at this point.
Okay, if they ask to be connected during the meeting, please do so, and we'll see them come up on our screen.
Correct.
Okay, we'll open with the Pledge of Allegiance. You see the flag in Tammy Bannick's screen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that's a little hard to do when the mics turn on and off. Okay, on our agenda tonight, as I said, are two public hearings. We'll get to those a little later. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the February 18th minutes. Have the Planning Commission members had an opportunity to review the minutes? And are there any additions or corrections to be made?
I've reviewed them. I have no additions or corrections.
Nor do I.
Nor do I.
I've read them, and I do have a question specifically of Chairman Milch. Under his comments at the end in the second sentence on page 1-7, he said he hopes in the future the conversations could be a little more regulated from the chair and a little less free form. And I'd like to know if he could clarify that just a little bit, so we understand the rules of the road.
Well, I'd like to be able to call on members to speak one at a time on various issues and just take a little more leadership of the meeting than happened the last time. I'd like everyone to be able to participate, but especially with this platform, it might be helpful to call on people individually and only have one person speaking.
For those of you who may be new to Zoom, if you click on the participants button, there is a way to raise your hand.
Doesn't look like I have the...
No.
Oh, no, I sit down at the bottom on this one. Yeah.
You are correct.
On the participants on the bottom of the page.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as they are.
Is there a second? All right, the motion, uh, a motion to approve the minutes has been made and seconded. All those in favor indicate by showing a thumbs up.
I have the, the motion was made by Commissioner Langston. Can you advise who the second was by, please?
I believe the second came from Commissioner Pat Smith.
Correct.
Thank you. If we could make, just make sure that we make that announcement at each time, Chair Milch. That way we'll have it on the recording.
Very good. All right, and it appeared that the motion passed, so the minutes are approved. Next on the item, uh, next item on the agenda is the monthly planning report from Joy Fields, our, um, our contract planner through the city or for the county of Clackamas. Joy?
Good evening. So we have a couple of monthly reports in your packet, and I have shared my screen and then scrolling to the, the beginning page of the February monthly report, so that attendees may see what I am referring to. In February, there were 10 contacts with customers over the counter in the lobby. There were 66 emails and phone call contacts. There were four building permits with land use review, and there was one administrative decision. There was a public hearing held by the Planning Commission on proposed code amendments, and the Planning Commission made a recommendation to city council, who then heard the, the proposed amendments in March. The administrative permit that was reviewed by the planning staff was for the Gladstone Civic Center signs. They were approved, and if you drive by the building, you may see them on the walls. In addition to the administrative permit, the building permits that were reviewed included a carport cover, a patio cover, replacement of rafters, and an installation of a bathroom, commercial tenant improvements, and, um, that included the removal of a balcony and a re-roofing. This is so long ago, February. But in March, we continued to have customer contacts at the counter. While the lobby was still open, people were still coming in. We had 62 phone calls and emails. We had 11 building permits with land use review. We had one administrative decision. April, it started to get a little quieter with the lobby being closed to the public due to COVID-19. There were still contacts through phone and email, and there were three building permits with land use review. As Chair Milch mentioned, the public hearing that had been scheduled for March had to be rescheduled for May 19th, that is, tonight. The public hearing for the proposed code amendments was heard by city council, and they adopted the proposed code amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission on the 10th of March. And the administrative permits the planning staff reviewed included New Life Church signs, signs with their new logo and name. Building permits included replacement of siding, uh, a solar system on the new civic center, a heat pump, a remodeling, repair to fire damage, a wall and fence, and a certificate of occupancy for the new civic center. Do you all have any questions about any of these monthly reports?
No, they look great. Thank you. I would like to say I really appreciate that you list out what the administrative decisions are for, because I like knowing that. That's from Commissioner Smith.
Wow. I do. Thank you.
Do we have a motion for the monthly reports to accept the planning commission or planning reports?
I'll make a motion that we approve the planning reports.
A second, Commissioner Langston.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate with a thumbs up. All right, the motion passes. The report is accepted. All right, at this mo, uh, at this point, we move to public testimony from anyone who's attending, who is not here to speak on an item that's on the agenda. Do we have anyone in that category here today?
Darren Williams is here.
Oh, thank you, Darren. We will show you as attending. Thanks for coming.
I've been fighting this thing, but I'm, I'm here, and we're still playing, so.
Okay, it shows your video is closed, so you can get your camera to work, then we'll see you too.
Okay, hopefully soon.
All right, hearing no, um, public testimony on items other than the, um, the hearings that we have scheduled, let's move now to the public hearings. Our role as a planning commission is to conduct public hearings and to make decisions about land use matters in Gladstone. In making those decisions, we must apply the law as enumerated in the city's land use regulations, which include the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan and Title 17, zoning and development of the Gladstone Municipal Code. The commission cannot vary from or change that law. If you think the law should be changed, you can work with the city to do that, but state law provides that applications must be judged based on the law that existed when the application was filed. Members of the Planning Commission are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing on each item, I will ask the members of the Planning Commission whether they have any potential conflicts such as family, financial, or business relationship with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. If such a potential conflict exists, I will ask whether the commissioner in question believes he or she is without actual bias or whether he or she would like to step down from the Planning Commission during the case. I will also ask whether any of the planning commissioners have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. If any of the planning commissioners have had such contacts, I will ask the planning commissioner to disclose the substance of that contact. If a planning commissioner has independent knowledge of relevant facts, I will ask the planning commissioner to summarize those facts. During the testimony, a witness may challenge the impartiality of a planning commissioner and may rebut the substance of a planning commissioner's knowledge of the facts. The commissioner in question may respond to such a challenge.
Yeah, that's good.
A copy of the agenda for today's hearing and copies of the staff report were available online. Normally, they'll be on a table at the back of a room when we get back to meeting in a room, and we will consider the cases one at a time in the order that they're listed on the agenda. I will start each case by asking staff to summarize its written report. Then the applicant and those in favor of the application testify. Then witnesses who oppose the application or who have questions or concerns testify. If there is opposition or there are questions, the applicant can respond to them. The planning commissioners may also ask questions of the staff and the witnesses throughout the hearing until the record closes. If a witness introduces new evidence in response to opposition or questions, everyone gets a chance to respond to the new evidence. Then the applicant can make a closing statement without introducing new evidence. Then I will close the public portion of the hearing, and the Planning Commission will deliberate about what to do with the application. During deliberations, the Planning Commission may reopen the public portion of the hearing, if necessary, to receive additional evidence before making a decision. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. You must testify orally or in writing before the close of the public record to preserve your right to appeal our decision to the Gladstone City Council or the Land Use Board of Appeals, known as LUBA. In making a decision, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations, which are identified by the staff report. Please make sure your testimony and evidence are related to these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. You must raise an issue clearly enough so people can understand what it is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise that issue before the city council or LUBA. Testimony also should not be repetitious. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. Normally, if you wish to testify, you'd fill out a public comment card and hand it to the city recorder. Tonight, people have indicated in advance that they plan to testify, and we have that. I will ask you to begin your testimony, giving your name. We already have your address, and since this will be recorded and made public, you may not want to make your address public. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, I think tonight that doesn't really apply. Everybody has given it to us already. The planning staff will keep exhibits until appeal opportunities expire, and then you can ask them to return exhibits if you had something physical that you turned in. It's also important that you make your best case to the Planning Commission, because although all of our decisions are subject to appeal, the city council will decide the appeal based solely on the evidence in the record before us. If you feel you need more time to prepare, you can ask the Planning Commission to hold open the record or to continue the hearing. You must make that request before we close the public portion of the hearing. If the Planning Commission holds open the record, you can submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record before the commission makes a decision. If the Planning Commission continues the hearing, it means oral and written testimony, including new evidence, can be offered at a future hearing. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing or the public hearing or commission deliberations may be continued to a time and date certain. If the hearing or deliberations are continued to a specific date and time, this will be the only notice of that date which you will receive. Regardless of whether the hearing is continued or the record is held open for any other reason, state law provides that we must hold open the record for at least seven days after it is closed to all other parties to allow the applicant to submit final written arguments in support of an application, unless the applicant waives that right. We must also comply with state law that requires the city to make a final decision, including all appeals, within 120 days after the planning staff found the application was complete, unless an application, an applicant waives that right. So generally, we cannot continue a hearing or hold open the record for very long. At this point, Planner Fields, I'd like to ask you a question. What has happened to this 120-day deadline in light of COVID-19 and the need to postpone hearings? Have we generally kind of stopped the clock ticking on that? Is that, uh, no? Okay.
We have asked both applicants that are appearing before you today whether they would be willing to stop the clock or toll the clock, as it is often called in the planning world. The applicant for Z071-20-C, the conditional use permit for Webster Road, did toll the clock, which gives us an extra 30 days for any appeals or if we need to hold the record open tonight. However, the applicant for Z0018-20-D has not told the clock, and so there is time within that 120 days for an appeal to be made to city council. But, um, there is limited ability to hold the record open for more testimony in that circumstance.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Except in cases where the commission is making a recommendation to the city council, and that doesn't apply with tonight's hearings, the commission's decision will be the city's final decision in this matter unless it is appealed to the city council. An appeal must be filed within 15 days and in accordance with Chapter 17.92 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. So that's my introduction. We will begin with the first item on tonight's agenda, which is application number Z0018-20-D. The project location, 810 East Arlington Street, and I would ask our staff to present the report.
Thank you, Chair Milch. I have my PowerPoint presentation up so that participants should be able to see it. The project, as you mentioned, is located at 810 East Arlington Street. The project is, proposed is to remodel an existing 1838 square foot building to meet the code and ADA requirements and to change the exterior appearance of the building. The proposal includes site development with the addition of a trash enclosure and a bottle storage room. The applicant provided additional applicant, or additional information to me earlier today that the fuel tanks are anticipated to remain and not be replaced, as indicated by the proposed project proposal he, up on the screen. So just please note that the fuel tanks may just remain as they are. But the proposal does include an increase to the pavement on the site with additional parking and, uh, more vehicle circulation capabilities. This is a street view image of the site as it exists currently. You can see the existing fuel canopies that will remain in the proposal. The existing building, um, the convenience store is located there. That is supposed to be remodeled. The existing fence will be removed, and the pavement will come out to include parking spaces. This site is approximately half an acre in size, and it's zoned general commercial. And vehicle service stations such as this are in allowed use in that zoning district. What makes it unique is that the properties around it are also zoned commercial, so there is no screening requirement for residential properties, because it does not abut any residentially zoned properties. Public notice was sent to the applicant, the owner of the subject property, and the property owners located within 250 feet of the subject property. It was also sent to the city of Gladstone, the Public Works Department, Gladstone Fire, Gladstone Police Department, Engineering, West, and Tri-City. West provides storm sewer services, and Tri-City is, provides, um, additional water and sewage services. Comments have been received by Public Works, Fire, and West Tri-City. The comments from Public Works were incorporated into the special conditions, and all of the comments were included in the staff report that you all received. The building is existing, as noted on the, the street view, the aerial images in the staff report. However, the, because it is subject to design review, section 17.44.020 applies, and that section is building, siding, and design standards. The siding of the building meets the standards, and because it's existing, thus, the location and the footprint of that building is not anticipated to change. The use is combat, compatible with surrounding uses, including the adjacent car wash. The requirement for being shielded from residential properties does not come into play in this circumstance. The mechanical equipment up on the top is proposed to be shielded by the white, um, walls up at the top. The one thing that you all need to consider as a planning commission is the design of the building with the exterior materials that are being proposed. The applicant proposes to use a mixture of materials, some of which includes ribbed metal sheeting. The reason for that, the reason for you all to consider this material is because it is only allowed if you explicitly approve it. So the Gladstone Municipal Code does not you, allow the use of metal siding, unless explicitly allowed by approval from the Planning Commission. That is why in the materials, um, there is the inclusion of some examples of the ribbed metal sheeting. The proposed site plan, it can be seen here.
Ms.?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith, could you repeat what you just said about how it's to be approved?
Um, the building materials that are being proposed have to be explicitly approved by the Design Review Committee. And the Design Review Committee consists of the Planning Commission. So in this case, the Planning Commission has to approve the building materials. The building materials is, are, are included in the special conditions, and they're also included in the example motion that I have at the end of the PowerPoint. So I, I believe the applicant has asked me to share additional examples of the re, the ribbed metal sheeting, so that you all can see additional examples of what this metal-ribbed material looks like when it is on a building. And so I will be sharing my screen, which will have those examples as well as those that were in the staff report.
Can you please mute your microphone?
Okay. So on the screen in front of you is the proposed site plan that was, um, this is the third revision of the site plan. It was revised on the 17th of March, which was the last planning commission meeting that had to be rescheduled, and it was revised to remove two parking spaces and increase the width of the landscaping between the parking spaces and the property boundaries. Section 17 dot 46 dot 020 requires that permits for design review include a 10-foot landscaped area between parking areas and the property lines. And so the site plans were revised, which is why you all should have received additional site plans for this project. And they were revised to include that 10 feet of landscaping. That section of the code, the landscaping requirements, also include that 15% of the site shall be landscaped. With the removal of the two parking spaces, the amount of landscaping increased to be 6,810 square feet, which is approximately 26% of the site will be landscaped. And so there will be plants, um, and including shrubs and trees that will create a visual barrier between the parking and adjacent businesses, as well as parking in the street. Currently, there is the, the grass that you all saw on the street image. The proposal also included a sign on the building, as seen here. And the signs, the freestanding sign and the signs on the fuel canopies were approved through sign permits back in December. The addition of this on-building sign, um, is in line with the dimensional standards for signs in the Gladstone Municipal Code. And so there is room within the maximum sign size limit for an on-building sign such as proposed. So planning staff is recommending approval of the proposed design review project with five standard conditions and 12 special conditions. Design review project with five standard conditions and twelve special conditions of approval. The special conditions of approval include lighting to make sure that the light from the project does not spill over into adjacent properties. Parking, there is. Too many parking spaces proposed on the site. There are too many parking spaces proposed on the site. The site plan, um, provided and revised on March seventeenth. Show a total of fourteen parking spaces. And that includes thirteen around the edge and one handicap parking space. The Gladstone Municipal Code, section one, seven point four, eight. Allows the planning commission to grant an exception. To parking standards as long as it does not exceed twenty-five percent of the standards. So the maximum number of parking spots allowed per the code is eleven. So the twenty-five percent increase that could be met through an exception. To the standards would bring it up to fourteen, which is the amount. Proposed in the revised site plan that you all received. If you all do not grant an exception to parking standards. Then the applicant will need to eliminate additional parking spaces. As I mentioned early, earlier, the applicant provided me with revised site plan today, this morning. And in that site plan, they modified the location of the handicap accessible parking space. And removed two parking spaces. So the most recent plans I have seen as of this morning included a total of twelve parking spaces. Which is still one above the maximum allowed without an exception granted by you all. And so in the special conditions, there is a special condition related to.
How many handicap parking spots? Is there just one or two?
There is just one based on the plan I saw today and based on the plans that you all have in front of you that were submitted on March seventeen.
Thank you.
As with most design review applications, there is a special condition. That construction plans are submitted to the Public Works Department. As I noted earlier, the Public Works Department comments were incorporated into the special conditions. And they included comments on water, sanitary sewer, right of way and sidewalks. But the final construction plans will be reviewed and will have to be approved. Per special condition number ten.
Perfect.
If there is any change to the plans. Um, that impact the, the landscaping or parking and access. That would bring it out of compliance with the special conditions you provide. Or with the approval, then they will have to go through design review again and you will see the plans.
Ms. Fields, this is our Commissioner Pat Smith. I have a question about the siding. Is there a specific structural reason? That metal siding is being used or is it a simply an architectural choice or design choice?
I hope that the applicant can provide you with an answer to that question when they speak to their application.
Thank you.
Were you ready for some comments on the, um, the findings that you have in here?
Absolutely.
Can you go to page three, twelve at the bottom?
In your planning packet?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, if you could share it with everybody that probably best.
Let me find it before I share it so that I don't give people, um, a headache.
Malachi, can you pull it up?
Uh, I haven't downloaded it yet.
Oh, okay.
So you said three, twelve?
Yeah.
You did notice today as I was preparing that there was a typo in the staff report and I apologize for that. Um, I'm not sure if that is where you are leading me.
Probably.
Probably, yes. Okay, three, twelve.
So the last paragraph, it says.
The five and the three.
Actually, the sentence right before that, it says sixteen and fourteen.
Right. And that was the typo that I saw as I was preparing for the presentation tonight and I.
Although maybe moot now with the changes from today, right? So.
It might be. And so that is the plans date that I received. On March seventeenth that were revised on March twelfth included a total of fourteen. And I apologize, the original plans had sixteen. And so when I revised the staff report, there was that inconsistency and I apologize for that.
So it's currently twelve though.
Yes, based on what I saw this morning and what I will share with you in a moment. When the applicant prepares their presentation. And so, um, as. As submitted with their application on three seventeen, it was a total of fourteen parking spaces. And that was three over the maximum allowed, which is eleven. Thank you for bringing up that typo.
Any other questions from commissioners on the report so far?
None.
Continue, Joy.
Okay, um. I have been inviting people to join and I apologize if they were waiting in the waiting room for a minute. Um, I was focused on bringing attention to the, the finding that Malachi wanted to review. So for those of you who recently joined, I apologize for the delay.
And we have Les now as well.
Yes.
Yes, I was having problems with my other computer and I, I don't know if it was you or me, but I got up all reliable and saw him on. So I probably look herky jerky, but good to see you.
Thank you. Let the record show that Commissioner Poole is in attendance as well. I think that gets us all here, so. Welcome, Les.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on the findings or the staff report?
Now, before we get to the specific staff recommendations. Maybe I should have done this before, but I wanted to make sure that every commissioner was in attendance. This will be the time that I will ask commissioners individually about whether. They want to declare any potential conflict of interest or ex parte contact. Or independent knowledge of regular, of relevant facts regarding this project. Now that you have a clear idea from the staff report of which building and, and business we're talking about. Uh, so I will just go in order, beginning with Commissioner Langston. Do you have any? A potential conflict of interest or ex parte contact? Or have you visited the site or have any other independent knowledge that are relevant to this particular?
I have no conflicts of interest or any ex parte contact. I've only been to the site.
Okay, Commissioner Natalie Smith, same questions.
No ex parte. I have visited the site. Um, that pretty much takes care of it.
Okay. Commissioner Malachi.
Uh, no ex parte or anything. And given everything going on, I have not visited this site.
All right, I myself, Michael Milch, have visited the site and. Made one little drive through around the date of our last scheduled meeting because I had not really seen the back of the building before. But I have no other, no, no conflict of interest or other independent knowledge. Commissioner Poole.
No, I visited the site twice and have no, made no contacts and have no conflict.
Okay. Commissioner Williams.
I have been to this, been to this store and got gas there before. Uh, I have no ex parte or no conflict of interest. I got a question, what are they going to be? And it's maybe not in our realm, but what are they going to be using this extra parking for? And I mean, does it even matter?
I, I think we'll find out from the applicant, uh, the answer to that question.
Okay.
Okay, and Commissioner Pat Smith.
I have visited the site. I have no conflicts of interest and no ex parte contract contacts.
Okay, very good. Uh, thank you commissioners for that. Uh, we will move now to the applicant report. And let's hear from them if they would like to make a report and then we can take a look at the recommendations from staff.
Hello, this is Peter Capert with Petroleum Designs.
Welcome.
Thank you. So the, um, the existing building of is was once a service station. So it's a sheet metal, non-combustible sheet metal building that was previously remodeled. Uh, the existing building exterior is sheet metal, uh, flat sheet metal panels. And the owner wanted to give it a more modern look and. Would like to use ribbed metal panels, uh, which we have some pictures of that type of material. Uh, that were previously submitted. Uh, so it's in keeping with the existing building. Uh, with the existing building material and just adding a ribbed texture to the sheet metal. To provide a more modern and sleek look. Uh, there's no structural value to the material. It's simply for aesthetics. The parking spaces are primarily for employees and customers. There's no other use anticipated. Other than the store, retail store and for employees. The revised site plan, uh, which I only provided to Ms. Fields today. Has twelve parking spaces and the handicap stall has been moved to the east property line. Yeah, that's the current proposed plan. Also of note is they've, the owners decided not to replace the existing underground tanks. Since they're double wall fiberglass, uh, there's no reason to replace them. But we will be replacing the underground piping and upgrading the dispensers. So we'll have double wall piping and dispensers with containment sumps under each dispenser. So it's just a piping and dispenser change over the existing tanks. So we, we have a request for one additional parking stall above the maximum required. And request approval of ribbed metal siding. For this project, um, trying to give it a clean and modern look. My suspicion is that the existing code. Didn't want to see corrugated metal siding like a Quonset hut. In, in their city, but I, I don't know what. What reason there is for not permitting metal siding, although the existing building is metal siding. Um, I do have a question about the. Require, the stormwater requirement. I'm just curious what triggers that? Is it any permit or is it a certain amount of impervious surface? Or, you know, why, why does the stormwater being. Required to be complied with since it's all existing.
Mrs. Fields, would you like to address that question?
I can. The stormwater requirements are triggered by a certain amount of impervious surface. Um, in the staff report. Um, there was mention of. State requirements for storm drainage. And those are state requirements and I just noted them. Because that is not something that we can require, but it is state requirements for filling stations. And when I say we can't require it, that is the planning commission. The, but the storm drainage should can. Has to conform with the Public Works Design Standards. And per the Gladstone Municipal Code, but the Oregon Plumbing Specialty Code. May or may not, uh, come into play when the city reviews the permits and the building department reviews the permits. So I made a note that it may come into play. But the Gladstone Municipal Code requires that the Public Works Design Standards are met. And those are triggered by impervious surface.
And that's triggered by new impervious surface or any impervious surface?
Um, it, it's my understanding that it's new impervious surface. So we can, we can discuss this, um, in more detail. Uh, when you are getting your construction plans ready for the Gladstone Public Works Department to review. Unless the planning commission wants to be a part of this discussion tonight.
Well, my concern is that if this becomes a condition of approval tonight. Uh, and we work with the public works and determine that it's not required. Because we don't meet the threshold for impervious area, how do we get the condition of approval changed?
In general, we would require that you comply with the requirements as specified by the Public Works Department.
And I think what you're saying, Malachi, if I can go a little further is that if the Public Works Department determines that it is not required. Then the approval tonight would be sufficient.
Right. So some part of our approval relies on other departments like fire and police and public works signing off on their section of it.
Question, is there, um, I'm just thinking of, is there a requirement? The DQ might be getting. Something that. Triggers the need for catch rate. Of the amount of impervious surface. In other words, it's not just that there's an impervious surface there. Do we consider the fact that this is a service station or am I, uh, getting into an arena that we should not consider? Now, it was a DQ requirement may supersede or obviously if there is one, they would have to meet it. So I don't think we need to belabor that, but I don't want to just slide by that right now and have this come back later.
Uh, Joy, were you able to hear that? Uh, do you know whether there are DEQ requirements that are specific to service stations? That, uh, that we need to be concerned about in our consideration of this talk. that we need to be concerned about in our consideration of this talk?
I was able to hear most of the planning commission pool's comments, but not all of it. The DEQ, usually it's also triggered by a percentage of impervious surface, and I, this is a small amount, I can pull up the plans and identify the certain amount, I don't have it on the top of my memory, but it is the additional, the added impervious surface is about 1,892 square feet. And so the 5,000 square foot trigger is not met.
Thank you.
All right. Does the applicant have further questions or additional report for us?
Well, I'm, since it appears that there's a 5,000 square foot threshold for stormwater management, and we do not meet that threshold, I would request that the condition of approval for stormwater management for the entire site be stricken from the, the condition of approval.
The storm drainage was a note for your awareness, it was not included as a special
You just have larger parking spaces?
So you'll note that there are 12 special conditions.
The, the building footprint hasn't changed, are you talking about the footprint of the
There's sanitary sewer and water, but the stormwater for the storm drainage is a note
parking stalls?
I am, yes, sir.
That is not changed. In fact, it may have been reduced slightly, I did not recalculate the area, but I don't
and not a specific special condition.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. believe there's an increase in impervious area as a result of going from 14 to 12 parking
You're welcome.
Could you, I am open to any questions staff or the commission may have, but I believe spaces.
So it basically stayed the same?
Correct.
Okay.
On the sidewalk going from the handicap to the front door, is there any kind of
the staff report covers all the bases other than the revised site plan, which has 12 parking,
road alterations there to reduce traffic going through at a faster pace?
now will have 12 parking spaces rather than the previously submitted 14.
Sure, Joy, could you reshare the, the revised?
We have only proposed paint striping as opposed to a different material.
I sure can.
Okay.
Hold on one moment. Let me get it up so that it is what is shared when I share my screen.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Do we have any, anyone here to testify in favor of the application, a proponent of this project?
I would like to add, the, the owner is.
Go ahead, please.
I think we lost him.
We heard you say the owner is, but then we lost you after that.
The owner is traveling, he's, he's not available, he doesn't have an internet connection.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm glad you're here to represent him tonight.
Yeah, have one question, on your walkway there, if I remember right, that sidewalk, is that going to, that little section where you're walking from the handicap, is that going to be ramped?
There isn't, that's a ramp, right where that little arrow is.
It is existing?
No, it'll be a new ramp.
Okay, I think it was, I thought it was that right.
Yeah, okay, we're, the entire sidewalk in front of the building is being replaced. The existing sidewalk does not meet the minimum width requirement.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, that was my question, because I'm frankly a customer there, and you notice these things, having a sidewalk actually replaced, and, and the things that you're doing with the handicap parking, I think are going to be a real improvement.
This is Commissioner Smith, and I have a question regarding the proposed metal, you know, that looks like it has, it, it's not corrugated, but it looks like it's got lines or some sort of tubing to it. Were there any other styles or types that the owner considered other than this particular choice?
The owner specifically wanted a, a box rib siding. He, he found a convenience store in his travels, and he liked the appearance of it, and he sent me a picture, he says, I want to do this. So I, I found the box rib pattern, it's made locally, or in, I think it's made in Salem, and it's a rectangular box rib, I think it's a two inch deep flute that's four inches wide.
And it's just going to appear on the, I don't know if it's the east side of the building there where it wraps around?
It'll, well, I'm using that panel in both a vertical and horizontal application. So above the windows, it would be horizontally applied, and on the south face and the east face and a piece of the west face will have vertical ribs.
Okay, now, the vertical will be, in the picture, it looks like it's gray, is that the intent charcoal or gray?
Yes, so we have a medium gray and a light gray color for the panels, and the brickwork will be a charcoal colored brick. So the whole, the theme will be gray with the tower element being white.
Now, the horizontal, the application that you're using above the windows, is that going to be black or is that charcoal?
That's a light gray, as I recall.
Isn't the pictures, it looks dark, that's why I was asking.
I provided, I, I thought I had provided color chips with my original.
Probably did, I just had, I was just, my eye was fixated on the pictures that were submitted.
Yeah, those are pretty rough and are not a precise indication of the proposed colors.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, I, I asked if there were any additional proponent testimony, and in the absence of the owner of the property, I guess there is none. Is there any opponent testimony, anyone here to speak against the proposal? Hearing none, we'll move on to, there's no need for applicant rebuttal because there was nothing testified in opposition to the plan. So it's time we make a decision, do we want to continue the hearing or close the public hearing at this time?
Commissioner, or Chairman Milch, I have a question, there's, there's two revisions, parking spaces and the acceptance of the metal siding, do we need to deal with those individually prior to making a decision on the existing proposal?
How will that work out in your proposed motion, Mrs. Fields?
I will bring it up, and you can see what I proposed, and see if it is to your liking or needs to be amended. The total of 14 parking spaces would need to be modified to be 12 per the site plans that were submitted this morning.
And that's, excuse me, that's 12, that includes the handicap, so there's 11 more?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, just want to make sure I'm not missing the numbers, okay.
Okay, so in answer to Commissioner Pat Smith's question, we do have a separate motion regarding the two, the design review elements, and, and then another suggested motion for the, the entire proposal. Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time, would any member of the commission like to make such a motion?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
It's been moved, is there a second?
A second, Natalie Smith.
It's been moved by Commissioner Malachi, and seconded by Commissioner Natalie Smith to close the public hearing, all those in favor indicate with a thumbs up. All right, any opposed? All right, I believe the motion is carried, the public hearing is closed. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter or to deliberate and make a ruling on this matter? I hear no such objections, okay, so would someone like to make a motion to recommend one of the motions given to us by staff?
I'll, I'll try to work through the parking one, I, I move that we amend design review Z, as in zebra, 0018-20-D, to reduce the number of parking spaces from 14 to 12 to include the handicap space, knowing that that's one above the maximum limit.
I second the motion, Mr. Williams.
And, and just for clarification, it's actually not a reduction, but it's an increase over the current code maximum number of parking spaces, so we're going from 11 up to 12 total. That's the condition that we're doing, so, so everyone is clear on that. All right, you, you're not going to make them, you're not going to include the building material as part of that motion, then?
I think we ought to treat them separately.
Okay.
I mean, that would be my suggestion.
All right, a motion has been made to, to approve the total of 12 parking spaces as presented in the most recent report. All those who would approve this motion, or at least there any discussion.
And can we please do a roll call on that?
Very good, okay, no discussion, let's have a roll call. Tammy, go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Milch?
Yes, the motion is carried unanimously. All right, is there another motion with regard to the approval, the design review requirement for review of the building materials?
I guess I'll do it, I'll move that the commission approve the design review Z 0018-20-D to approve the building material proposed on this project.
Second that, Commissioner Poole.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All right, Tammy, call the roll, please.
Commissioner, Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Milch?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Now, where it goes from here, again, I'm new to this, I know that we need to give you a written summary of the ruling. Joy, do you prepare that? Do I have to sign it? Just let me know what's required from this point forward.
I will prepare a decision for you to sign. You will sign it, and I will send it on to the applicant and the contact.
Very good, okay, for all of you who are in attendance regarding this matter on the agenda, thank you for your participation tonight, you are free to leave the meeting if you'd like to, and we will move on to the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, quick question for our applicant, we'd just like to know, since it's a small town, we're always curious, how soon do you hope to start your, your, your work there?
He wanted to start six months ago.
I hear ya.
So as soon as we get a permit, he's going to start building.
Great, hopefully the weather's good for you, and thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I just want to comment, it, it's, it's nice that, that staff can work with an applicant to make changes that really work to the benefit of, of, you know, a, a number of conditions. You, you had way more parking than you needed originally, you were able to reduce parking to accommodate more landscaping and still come in within a limit that the, that the commission was able to approve, so I appreciate the applicants and the, and the planning staff working together to come to satisfactory conclusion on issues like this, it's, it's why we have the system we do, so thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
Good luck, thank you very much.
Okay, good night.
All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is another public hearing. This one is file Z 0071-20-C, to convert an existing 27,000 square foot building to provide 48 residential units to be a mix of single room occupancy and studios for older adults, as well as space for third-party supportive services. So.
of the building materials and exception to the parking standards to allow a total of 12 parking spaces and conditions pursuant to staff recommendation.
I second the motion.
All right, any additional discussion on the motion to approve the project as reviewed? All right, let's do a roll call on this as well.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Milch?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Now where it goes from here, again, I'm new to this, I know that we need to give you a written summary of the ruling, Joy, do you prepare that, do I have to sign it, just let me know what's required from this point forward.
I will prepare a decision for you to sign, you will sign it, and I will send it on to the applicant and the contact.
Very good, okay, for all of you who are in attendance regarding this matter on the agenda, thank you for your participation tonight, you are free to leave the meeting if you'd like to, and we will move on to the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, quick question for our applicant, we'd just like to know, since it's a small town, we're always curious, how soon do you hope to start your work there?
He wanted to start six months ago.
I hear ya.
So, as soon as we get a permit, he's gonna start building.
Great, hopefully the weather's good for you, and thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I just want to comment, it's nice that staff can work with an applicant to make changes that really work to the benefit of, you know, a number of conditions, you had way more parking than you needed originally, you were able to reduce parking to accommodate more landscaping, and still come in within a limit that the commission was able to approve, so I appreciate the applicant and the planning staff working together to come to satisfactory conclusion on issues like this, it's why we have the system we do, so thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
Good luck, thank you very much.
Okay, good night.
All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is another public hearing, this one is File Z 0071-20-C to convert an existing 27,000 square foot building to provide 48 residential units to be a mix of single room occupancy and studios for older adults, as well as space for third-party supportive services. So, again, we will begin with the staff report, Joy, take it away.
Thank you. So, Z 0071-20 is a two-part application, and both parts are tied to the property located at 18,000 Webster Road, identified here on the Google Maps. The entire proposal is to convert the existing 27,000 square foot building to provide a mix of meeting rooms, residential units, and kitchen space. The proposal includes site maintenance with the removal of some accessory structures and the repair of the existing parking space. The property is zoned R 7.2, it is a single-family residential zone that is approximately 2.2 acres in size, there were no environmental overlays found on this location. As you see from the aerial image, the existing structure is large with a couple of wings, and the basketball court and accessory structures are located in the back, and they are proposed to be removed. There are churches on a couple of sides of the proposed site, there's a water tower, and then there is a road of single-family residences to the north of the proposed site. Public notice was sent out to the property owner, the applicant, the property owners located within 250 feet of the subject property, the city of Gladstone, the Public Works Department, Gladstone Fire, Gladstone Police Department, Engineering, and West Tri-City. Comments were received from Public Works, Fire, and the Metropolitan Alliance for Common Good. These were incorporated into the Planning Commission packet that you received. In addition, we did receive comments from a neighbor that provided testimony for tonight's meeting, and in a moment, I will share that when it is applicable.
Thank you.
So the first part of the application is to consider an authorization of similar use, and the reason for this is the zoning district, R 7.2, allows homes for the aged, but does not allow senior housing centers. Senior housing centers are a conditional use allowed in the Office Park District, and because it's explicitly allowed in a different use and not identified in section of the Gladstone Municipal Code that is, that applies to the R 7.2 zoning district, you as Planning Commission have to authorize whether or not the proposal best fits the home for the aged, the senior housing center, or multifamily housing. If you determine that it best fits the description and requirements of home for the aged, then we will move forward with the second piece of the application, which is a conditional use application for the remodeling and change of use. The existing structure was originally built as a nursing home, it was then used as a rehab center for teenagers, and this proposal is changing the use to be for people over the age of 55 who are infirm. Because the use is changing, they are not able to use the previously approved conditional use that was allowed for the previous use, that is why it is before you tonight. So, in front of you is a quick table, I will note that there, the electronic method of sharing things ahead of time, I found that there was a typo when I revisited this today in preparation for tonight's meeting, the last bullet has been modified from the PDF that was originally submitted to the website, so you'll notice that the last bullet says that HAC is proposing to not use the site to house independent family units, and that is from the staff report.
Based on the comment you made earlier, should we be discussing this aspect of it before we go into the other aspects of it?
Yes.
Okay.
And so if you would like to discuss home for the aged, senior housing center, and multifamily housing, and the very nuanced differences between them, I would recommend that we jump right in and discuss those.
I would agree with that.
Okay, have you all had a chance to review this in pages 4-9 through, I think it's 4-11, from the staff report, and also I believe that the applicant's report makes a similar argument for the, for the proposed authorization of similar use? Have the commissioners reviewed this information?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, I have.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion that we do this, and then we can do a discussion of this issue separately before we move to the actual conditional use authorization? Is that okay, Joy, to do it in that way?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have language in front of us, perhaps I'll, oh, we do, okay. Good, thank you, Joy.
You're welcome.
I think David was trying to say something.
Yeah, good evening, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great, I was, I'm working off of somebody else's, one of my kid's laptops, and I can't figure out how to get the camera working, I apologize, you know, the, one of the, the trials of being in quarantine, I guess.
Can you identify yourself?
Yeah, so Chair Milch, this is David Doofman from the City Attorney's Office.
Oh, hi David, thank you.
Hi, hi, and I just wanted to, just for your benefit, I know, just to reiterate and support what was, what Joy had said, to me, it makes sense that you first look at this issue with respect to, you know, whether the use is similar based on the various definitions that are in the code, and then proceed, I think that, that sets you up for, depending on how you answer that, for the remainder of the application, anyway, I just wanted to throw that in there in case there was confusion.
Okay, well, thank you, it's always helpful to get in, you know, advice from our city attorney on these matters too. If it's okay, I will go ahead and make the motion myself that the commission approve authorization of similar use pursuant to the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
It's seconded by Commissioner Natalie Smith, any further discussion among commission members?
Yeah, we're gonna have a lot of discussion about it.
Okay.
Should I start, is there discussion, or?
Yes.
Can we go back to the table? Yeah, can we go back to the table? So, if you want to focus on this table specifically, a couple of the points on here.
Can I note that this is something that staff put together trying to wrap my head around this, and this table does not come out of the Gladstone Municipal Code?
Okay.
And so if you have specific questions, then we will need to go to the code to see how it is worded.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, the key things I was noticing here was that, my understanding from the applicant's responses was that they will not be providing, or specifically the word furnishing, they would not be furnishing the food, they would, they themselves wouldn't be providing the personal services, and they would be serving people over the age of 55, which to me makes it seem more like it's the third category than the first category, because they, they wouldn't really qualify for three of the boxes on the first category.
And Chair, Chair Milch, this is David Doofman again, just, just one other thing that I think I want to say as well, is that I think it's perfectly appropriate for the commission to look at this issue in the order I talked about, since it's so sort of central to the decision you'll make tonight, however, I would say that the, that the commission have that discussion now, but make sure you, you also allow for public testimony, including the applicant's testimony, before you actually make a final decision on how you're gonna interpret this, so I'll leave it up to you as to how much depth you want to go into now, prior to taking testimony, but I, I just didn't want to have that piece get lost in your discussion.
Thank you, David. Okay, so, we had a question raised by Commissioner regarding the, the portion of the code that relates to provision of food and shelter. Then I refer you to pages 4.8 and 4.9 of the, of the report.
Right.
Would you like me to bring those pages up onto the screen?
That'd be fine.
Okay, that would help.
Malachi?
Yeah.
This is, this is Natalie, if you could speak up a little bit, I'm having a hard time hearing you sometimes. That's probably just me, because I'm getting old. I hope everyone can hear me all right when I talk.
Yes, can, Natalie.
Okay, good.
So as I, as I read the report, I see that the line regarding food, as referenced for a senior housing center, it talks about formal meals to be provided, and the report has indicated that meals will not be provided, so under that category, it would not fall into the category of a senior housing center, and on the multifamily dwelling, there's no food provided at all in that category, so Commissioner Malachi, what was your argument that, that it didn't fit into that, the, the home for the aged category?
So up at the top of the page there, where it says home for the aged, it says that the facility will furnish the food, but if I understand the applicant correctly, they're really just providing the kitchen and the mini fridges and things like that, they're not actually furnishing the food. And we'll, we'll talk to the applicant to get clarification, but that is my understanding of reading it.
When I read it, it sounds to me as if, I mean, looking at it, and I don't want to get into the weeds or anything, but it says that it does, provides food and shelter, provides food and shelter, and then under multifamily, it doesn't provide any food, and as you read down further, it, they're living more independently, and I guess, because I've had elders I've taken care of, I see what this kind of, you know, you might end up going there, living independently, and then, you know, you age a little bit more, you need more help, I mean, I know this was kind of a different concept that they were coming up with in order to accommodate some low-income people that don't have home and shelter and whatnot, am I understanding that correctly?
And I think we can agree that they don't fit perfectly in any of the categories.
No, they do not, I agree with you on that.
Right.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't want to get hung up on what they're providing, but focus on whether or not we can make the special accommodations to be able to, you know, accept and or approve this to move on, you know, to, I, I'm trying to remember, it's the Clackamas County Housing Authority, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, and so they're, they're trying to do a new concept here of providing care for some low-income people and shelter, and so I don't know, I'm surprised of what the area is zoned for, but we are allowed to make the special accommodations.
Well, and that's, that's the purpose of this authorization of similar use, and it's not identical use, it's similar, so I think
Similar, yeah.
The preponderance, preponderance of the conditions, you know, as the staff report and the applicant's report have both indicated, seem to think that this is, this is the category into which we should categorize this particular proposal.
Could we get some clarity real quick about, I have a question that might help us hone in, and that is, if I'm correct, the multifamily housing really doesn't, doesn't have an age limit, so you're not dealing so much with the older folks, am I mistaken? Because that would change the dynamics quite a bit, depending on, obviously, what limits you have, if it's limited to 65 and older versus multifamily housing that doesn't apparently have that age limit, so I'm
That's a good question, Commissioner.
As we move along.
It says the project will support 55 and older.
And the
Would disqualify from the first two categories.
Yeah.
The applicant provided the definition for home for the aged that was in the Oregon Revised Statute in 1990, and that was a facility which furnishes food, shelter, and personal services for compensation to three or more aged persons who are residents there of, and excludes such persons who require nursing care. Similarly, the aged person was defined as a person of the age of 65 years or more who requires personal services, or a person less than 65 years who by reasons of infirmity, requires care, I'm not gonna butcher domiciliary, and the applicant proposes that the age limit of 55 with the reason of infirmity being that the people they serve are often suffering from addiction, mental health, physical issues, causes that to be meeting the definition of the home for the aged, or those served by home for the aged.
Chairman Milch, I've got a number of questions about this. First and foremost is, you know, the world's changed drastically in the last 90 days since the, the original thought for this project came to the forefront, this type of living arrangement, I think it's extremely plausible, the legislature will do something about state regulations, it would be very different from the ones we have today on this type of living arrangement. Sadly, the news told us in multiple locations, this type of facility has been a Petri dish, a veritable Petri dish for spreading virus and taking lives. The other thing that bothers me slightly about this is an opening up, the Pamplin newspaper last week, it used to be the Clackamas Review and now operates under numerous mastheads as they reorganize, is the first thing in the public notices was Clackamas County's already letting bids on constructing this prior to it being approved, and I don't know that that's necessarily a bad thing, I just thought that it was slightly out of order. If we're gonna have common feeding areas, common social interactivity, and it's not just an apartment house for older people, I think there may be a rush on this that may not be prudent at this point, that's just my own personal opinion, whatever, whatever the city decides to do with it is different, but there's a lot of watchouts in this to me.
All right, I appreciate your comments, I don't know that they are on point to the matter we're discussing now, though, I'd like to get us back to the issue of whether whether we should approve the authorization of similar use, finding Whether we should approve the authorization of similar use findings made by staff. Does anyone on the commission believe that, that this project better falls into the category, the other two categories? Senior home or multifamily dwelling?
I do.
You do? And you want to explain your reasoning?
Well, if you look through this list, they, they do provide shelter, but they don't provide the food. They're not actually providing the personal services themselves. And they're serving groups under 65. So out of those four boxes, they don't actually follow, they don't actually match three of them. If you look at the, the one on the far end, they match more of them. I don't have the boxes in front of me, but.
You're talking about the table that lists the three categories.
If you look at the table, they, they match the multifamily better. Because they match the age, they match the food requirement and they match the lack of services. But again, we would still need to talk to the applicant before we make any decisions, but that's why I feel like they fill, they fit more. Or into the multifamily.
All right.
The applicant allowed to talk right now? Is that, is that a thing?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I wasn't sure if we would need testimony from the applicant on this part because I. Didn't know the scope of the discussion it would be. So if it would be helpful to hear from the applicant on this issue, then I would recognize them.
Yeah, it, it just, I'm, I apologize, but this feels like a very irregular hearing as this is. I mean, typically the staff presents the project and then we're given an opportunity to talk before the discussion begins. So. I wasn't sure if we were allowed to talk now or not, but I think there's, there's two.
For the record.
Oh yeah. My name is Debbie Kleek. I'm with the book and group. I'm a land use planner. And I'm representing Hack on this project. And I think there's, there's two ways to look at this. There's both like the picking through the very specific details. Of the definitions that are in the code. And then there's sort of like the, the wider view of what's going on. So the code definitions, one thing to note is that the code definitions. Go back to 1990, I believe, and haven't been updated in a long time. And the world of healthcare and assisted living has changed dramatically since, and the, the. ORSs have changed like 20 times since these codes got codified into the Gladstone Code. So we had to work with what we were given, which was some pretty. Old, old code definitions that don't really match the reality of how things work in. And care facilities anymore. But, um, you know, the two things that you mentioned in terms of providing. Meals and, and the age of our residents, I think Joy, Joy talked about the age of the residents. We wanted to, I mean, there's a huge need in Clackamas County to provide housing and we could. Find any group of people and put them into this facility. The reason we're saying 55 and over is because we were told that we. Needed to very much make a distinction between, and this is really preliminary meetings with staff when we first started talking about this project. We're told we really needed to show that our facility was going to be different than the senior housing facility. And the senior housing facility very specifically says it's for 65 and older. And, and the home for the aged said that you could have 65 and older plus people that were defined as infirm. So we decided to drop the age to 55 and older so that we could say specifically, we are not a senior housing facility. But with that said, I mean, there, like I said, there's a huge pool of people that need housing in Clackamas County. And if it's more appropriate for a different age group to, for you to feel more comfortable with this. Proposal, then we can suggest something different. The wider view on why we are not independent housing is really because if in the multi, it's. The multifamily housing is essentially like an apartment building where people can come and go at any time. There's no accountability, there's no communal, there's no like communal living areas. It's essentially an apartment building. And it's a lot of families. With basically no real oversight other than the lease that they sign when they come in. And so we are really much more wrapped, our services are going to be much more wrapped around the residents that live in the facility. So that there'll be supervision, there'll be. Accountability of people coming and going, there'll be the personal services. So, you know, healthcare workers and. Nutritionists and life care skills and that sort of thing that will be coming in and being provided to the residents on a. Opt-in basis, which is something very different than what you would find in a typical apartment building. So it's really, you know, I mean, we had this weird needle to thread with our application. To show that we weren't an apartment building, nor were we a, a senior housing facility. And we had to show that we were this thing that is no longer even in the. Oregon revised statutes anymore. And we did our best to try and give you as many bullet points as we could to show how we were something different.
Can I ask, what was the reason you wanted to be declared a home for the aged instead of one of the other two categories?
We have to be a home for the aged in order to be considered a conditional use in the zone that we're in. And I think it's really important to note that the facility that we're moving into was originally built as a nursing home. And the most recent use was for adolescents who were. You know, had drug and behavioral problems. And the last time the planning commission went through this exercise to make the determination if it was a similar use. They determined that adolescents were similar to a nursing home. And so. That's a much different age group, but somehow still was able to get into the, our, this facility. So. If we are not considered a home for the aged, then we don't have the opportunity to apply for a conditional use in this zone.
Um, upon hearing you speak, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask if that answered the question. So Natalie, go ahead.
When I'm sitting here listening to you talk, it, it, I'm getting this multifamily, multi-generational. Almost kind of on the form of a group home to some degree.
No, 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 it's not a group home, but it's not multi-generational. It, these are individual units. They're like studio. Apartments for individual folks. So yeah, it's definitely not a, a multi-generational.
And you mentioned, yeah. I was going to say, you mentioned that there will be supervision and accountability. On what level will that be?
So, um, and I just want to say also that Stephen McMurtry with Hack is also on the call. So if I don't cover anything proper. Correctly, he's available to answer your questions too. But. As we described in our application, there will be two staff members that will be onsite 24 hours a day. To be sort of keeping track of the coming and going of, of residents. They'll, they'll all have fobs to open the doors, but there'll be somebody at the front desk to kind of like make sure. That they're coming and going and that they're observing quiet hours and that they're observing smoking rules and also just, you know, trying to. You know, keep the peace for better or for worse. And the diff, and that's a big difference between living in an apartment. Building or a multifamily structure where, you know, if you have a problem with another tenant, like you're on your own to resolve those problems. And there's nobody sort of checking in on when you're coming and going and kind of the level of accountability. Stephen, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I appreciate it. Thank you all so much for being here this evening. My name's Stephen McMurtry. I'm the Director of Housing Development for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. I'm also a resident of Oak Grove and grew up in these communities and in Milwaukee. And so I'm very passionate about this project. And understand that this is, this is not from a land use standpoint, something that can fit squarely in a, in, in a, in a box. Like many of us have had experience with before, and we just appreciate your opportunity to bring this project forward to you. To build on some of the things that Debbie said, look, the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, our mission is to provide. Opportunities and to help lift people out of trying times. This is a building and an opportunity that we saw that we could bring forward and provide. Independent living for folks in the strictest sense, in the sense that there will be individualized units. As Debbie mentioned, but also an opportunity for people to live in dignity and help get themselves. Back on track for a lack of a better term. We will, we have proposed that the units serve households or individuals. That are 55 and older, but have available to them case management services within the building. Those could take on. The flavor of what we'll call, and you may have heard in, in the marketplace recently, permanent supportive housing. In other words, site-based rental assistance that keep the units deeply affordable. At 30% or less of area median income where a tenant is only paying 30% of their income for that unit. In many cases, we may be dealing with somebody who's, it starts out not paying really anything. And then wrap around case management services that are available to them should they want to help with things like. Eviction prevention issues or drug and alcohol counseling connection and rehabilitation or. Things like food insecurity or just helping to get themselves on Oregon Health Plan or something along those lines. So the building will have those types of services. We also, many of you may be familiar with the site. And the fact that it has been a variety of different uses over time. And so it lends itself naturally in its existing construction to spaces for onsite connective services with. Counseling or palliative care through nursing programs. Maybe even things like providing volunteer-based. Beauty salons or hair salons. It's a, it's a building that has, you know, very wide corridors. It's a building that has the opportunity for people to come together in a communal kitchen setting. And, and provide meal services at that site, but I want to really focus in on the fact that. In our years of experience and all the years that the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, the. Oldest public housing portfolio in Oregon has been serving residents. We have really built our expertise on serving those. That are the highest barriers to housing, those folks that live in, in. In a place of really low incomes. And we're here to help move them forward up and out of those situations. Our vision for a property like this is to help immediately with the housing crisis that we have that's going on out there. You know, over the last few years, the, the crisis of houselessness has increased and has certainly hit some of our elderly populations. The hardest. And this is an opportunity for us to provide security, to provide voluntary services. To provide connections to community-based organizations and really best practices in having third parties. Provide things like meal services and nursing services and beautician services and all of those sorts of things. All of that can be accomplished at this, at this site and we're, and that's why, you know, we're really, we understand we're sort of walking. This code edge within everything. To Debbie's point, this is, I, I, I've been through many of these in my career, many of these processes and I, I feel. I guess a little bit, the way I'd put it is almost cart before the horse. So I want to step back. And, and be available to answer questions and whether, whatever format works for all of you. And, and open this up to the, the whole team that we have here this evening.
Yeah. So the way you are describing it, it does seem similar in scope to say the River Glen Apartments, just for older folks. It's targeting the same type of usage, the same type of care, the same type of services. So I kind of see them as the same type of facility for a different age group.
If I may, except that the River Glen Apartments do not have those services within the building. In a 24-hour type of setting to what Debbie was talking about. I'm the former Housing Director of Northwest Housing Alternatives. The River Glen Apartments was in my portfolio and those are connective services that are provided there. And it's a wonderful organization and a wonderful site. But what we're really talking about is providing opportunity within the building. That, that these folks that would be leasing units from would have available to them around the clock.
Thank you.
Have you ever done? Is this the first? Is this the first time that you've proposed a living vision like this before? Or do you have others around the county?
For the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, this, this is the first time that we've proposed this type of, of. Of development. It is 48 units, 12 of which would serve permanent supportive housing. Which is that robust deep dive case management and connected services. The rest of the units would be served by what's called site-based rental assistance, which is something that the Housing Authority of Clackamas County has been doing. Since project-based vouchers and site-based rental assistance was first sort of created in our portfolio. So that is something we definitely have decades worth of experience with. This type of model where we bring together. Colleagues within the community, working with our coordinated housing access system. To help people transition from perhaps formerly houselessness and to have full kitchen services. That are available within the building to have things like a, a small. Very low impact workout room, to have a community gathering space where educational services could come in. And I think a lot about the energy assistance program to have a platform to be there in one whole nexus altogether. Is something new, but it is something that has been done throughout the metro region and throughout the country many times before.
Will it be onsite laundry facilities as well?
Correct.
Is, is this similar to a halfway house to an extent? Or do you plan on your, your people being able to stay long-term?
People, oh, excuse me, sir, I'm sorry.
Are they going to be going in and out?
No, this is a situation where folks who qualify for these units, it is, they have to income qualify because the. Form of financing that we're using, one of the pieces of financing that we're using is the low income housing tax credit. And so all units under the low income housing tax credit program must be at 60% or less of area median income. And those that qualify for these units, income qualify for these units, then sign a lease where they can stay. Frankly, indefinitely if they so choose. Obviously what we love to see in our portfolio is when people have the opportunity to come in, to utilize services like this and then transition on. But we recognize that with this population in the current crisis of affordability that we have. In the current world that we have post COVID-19, that we may have people that stay here for multiple years. But they will, they will be signing a lease. So it is not transitional and this is not halfway. This is permanent stabilized housing.
Thank you.
Well, I think the, the, the information we've had from staff and from the applicant have been very helpful in helping us see the nuanced differences between. The various possible uses. It's a, it's a hybrid of a couple of things and maybe it's something a little bit brand new and the. The insufficiency or the outdatedness of our code. Is, is what forces us to. You know, to have to authorize the similar use as proposed. Are commissioners ready to, to take a look at that motion and. Come to an agreement on the appropriate category for this, for this proposed use?
Well, I have, I have a question real quickly and that is. We're hearing about a lot of different possibilities from the gentleman that just spoke of all the things that could happen there and. It creates a very vague picture of how much of that really will happen, how much traffic will have, et cetera. So I'm, I'm a little gray as to. You know, some of the criteria and saying, and I realize the code is somewhat outdated, but I don't believe the code is the biggest issue here. Even with an updated code, we still have to fit something into it for an approval. It, it seems like. There's some, you know, we're going to have to have a deeper discussion. to have a deeper discussion as you move along here.
Well, Commissioner, would you agree that the project as proposed falls into the category of a home for the aged as defined by the 1990 Oregon Revised Statutes? We can move on to debate the merits of the proposal after we deal with that issue, but we have to deal with that issue first.
Correct, but, but, but what's being proposed is interrelated. In other words, I know we're, we're back to the chicken and the egg, or the cart and the horse in front of each other, but I'm trying to get a better picture of what it is they intend to do there, who will be living there. Without trying to make a decision or get too deep into the merits of everything, I still need a bet, I'm looking for a better vision of what it is they're doing there, so therefore I can, I can be more comfortable to say, well, I, I believe it meets the, one of the three criteria, and I'm comfortable with it. So that, not trying to be difficult here, but I see a lot of things that raise one's eyebrows about how we're going to define this, because whatever decision we make, we'll live with, and certainly so will the applicant. And the more, the more comfortable I am with what it is exactly they're doing here, not what they might do, but, you know, the, the better picture of it, I'd be more comfortable. Hearing that we're looking at permanency for the residents answers the other question I had, and it's very clear with their age and condition that most of these folks are likely to be there long-term, and my decision isn't based on that. My, it's more of a, of a clarification of, of what will be the actual usage, what will the reality be once this is approved.
Chair Milch, David Doofen here again. Sorry to just jump in, but I, I want to make sure that procedurally we're, we're, we're taking the right steps as well. No doubt, the, the discussion you're having, you're going to need to get to, but my sense is before you really get into that, and making those determinations about A, the similar use, and then B, if it is similar, does it qualify for conditional use approval, is to one, you know, see if the applicant has any additional testimony they want to provide tonight, so we can kind of get a sense of whether their presentation is complete. And then the second piece would be also to take any public testimony, either, you know, for or against the proposal, because I, I think that ultimately, even on this issue, you're, you're going to want to have, and need to procedurally to have that, that, for the folks that are here and want to testify on this, have their input as well.
Okay, I accept that advice, and let me then back up a little bit, and let me go ask the commissioners, first of all, those questions about prior knowledge and conflict of interest and bias, and ex parte communication, just so we're clear on that, because if we're going to open up the discussion a little more broadly, rather than just this one narrow issue, it's best to have that in place at the beginning. So let me go back to the commissioners, starting with Commissioner Langston again. Do you wish to declare any potential conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or independent knowledge of relevant facts about this project, and have you visited the site?
I believe I might have a conflict of interest. I see that Carlton Hart is on drawings, and I see Michelle Black is here in the meeting, so I'm assuming that Carlton Hart does have involvement with this project, and I have a working relationship with Carlton Hart, and I know that my organization has provided input on some of the project planning with this, this particular project.
So do you, do you see that as a potential conflict or an actual conflict?
I believe it's a, a potential conflict, and I think I ran into this similar situation with the River Glen Apartments, and I think we decided that I would recuse myself from, from the hearing.
Okay, all right, that's helpful to know. You can mute yourself, so you're not participating verbally then. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Commissioner Natalie Smith, the same questions of you?
No conflict, no ex parte. I have visited the site. In fact, my grandfather lived there for several years when it was a nursing home, and so I know the site, I know the, the property well.
Thank you. Malachi?
No conflicts or no ex parte, and I have not visited the site.
All right, Commissioner Poole?
Yeah, I haven't had any ex parte contacts. I don't have any conflicts or preconceived notions, and I certainly have visited the site.
All right, Commissioner Williams?
No conflict, no ex parte, walk by it frequent, so I'm familiar and used to know somebody who worked there, but never been into the area.
All right. Commissioner Pat Smith?
No ex parte, no conflict of interest, and I have visited the site.
All right, and I would answer the same way. I drove through the parking lot to, again, just to size it up for what I couldn't visualize from the written plans. Did that back in March, just before we were to have heard the hearing then, but I have no conflict of interest or no other ex parte. The only other, I'll, I will declare one ex parte information I saw on social media back in December, that someone had posted that this building was going to be leveled for the purpose of, of a new construction. I know now that that information was inaccurate, and of course, we have heard, all the commission members have heard that this was coming up, and there have been announcements on the county's website, which shared most of the same information that was shared by the staff and the applicant, but I don't think any of us from those sources would have heard any information different from what's been presented to us as staff. Does any member of the public want to challenge the ability of any member of the commission to hear this matter impartially? Hearing none. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll have dealt with that issue. Let me go back to staff. Joy, we'll put this back in your hands, and perhaps you could...
Okay, I apologize for the confusion of how to move forward with the authorization of similar use. It was the beginning section of the presentation for tonight. Getting into more detail later on, as you all consider the conditional use aspect of the application, there are more details about what the site plans look like, where the parking is, and the, the information you are most often used to seeing in land use applications that come before the planning commission. What I wanted to get out of the way before going into those details is this authorization of similar use, and I thought that Malachi's request to see the staff report provided more detail than what was captured in this slideshow, and so I appreciated going back to that staff report. However, if you're ready, I'm happy to share the PowerPoint again, or go back to the staff report. We still need to hear from the public regarding the authorization of similar use, if the public has any testimony about that. We have received testimony from two individuals, but it seemed to be more general testimony that would come into play with conditional use. If you would like to hear the testimony now, I am happy to share the testimony that we have received. So that is whether you want to hear it for both public hearings, because it is about the entire proposal, or whether you want that to be shared at this time, and maybe not shared later. Chair Milch, do you have a preference?
Yeah, I think, following our city attorney's advice, I think let's get all the public input on record now. It, it may help, because as I hear the discussion from other commissioners, some of their views on this matter may be related to broader issues than, than the narrow zoning ones, so let's hear the public testimony that we have.
Okay. Bruce Hildreth requested that I share this testimony with you. You have received a, and a PDF of the email I received from him. The text is blown up here, so that members of the public may be able to read it along with me, but Bruce asked that I...
It's not currently sure.
It's not? You're not seeing a Word document with...
You'll see in the plot plan.
Oh, okay, thank you. It's not there. Let me stop that and share a different screen. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Are you seeing a Word document now?
Yes.
Excellent, there it is.
Okay, so Bruce asked that I share his comments, and then I know we have an audience member that would also like to testify. So from Bruce, my name is Bruce Hildreth, and I, I live at 7500 Ridgewood Drive. My wife and I currently, are not currently opposed to the project and its use at this time. A close proximity neighbor, we can see parts of the property and hear most loud activity. We are hoping that the county will abide by promises to keep the property well-maintained, and to monitor excess noise, especially during quiet hours of the evening. Since the county has bought the property in 2019 and conducted its first meeting with the public, noise has not been a problem. However, the upkeep of the property has been next to nil, with lack of suitable outdoor maintenance of the grounds. The property has random junk stored openly in the back, which has become an attractive nuisance. A set of small sheds that house old paint cans, which have been broken open and kicked about. There have also been many instances of vandalism to the property, which includes breaking and entering. All of these seemingly minor items do not bode well for a contiguous neighbor with decent people living in nice homes. We understand the process of permitting to begin development, and the time it takes to approve, but the county has an obligation to follow the ordinances of the city of Gladstone. Currently, I believe this property is in violation of many, on many counts, and frankly, should be reported. We are hoping that this letter of testimony will prompt the county to take a reasonable approach to clean up and maintain this property indefinitely, beginning today. Respectfully, Bruce Hildreth.
Thank you, and I believe we have a member of the public who would like to speak tonight as well.
That would be Ellen Burns.
Ellen Burns.
Yes. My name is Ellen Burns. I, I live in Gladstone, and I am here in support of the conditional use application for 18,000 Webster Road for the purpose of providing permanent supportive housing for very low-income seniors. I'm a registered nurse with a bachelor's in gerontology. The health and safety of older community members is a major concern of mine. Without a safe, stable place to call home, it's nearly impossible to focus on basic, basic health and medical needs. We know that housing is a key driver of health. This is especially true for our seniors, who are often dealing with chronic diseases and other complex health issues. Elders are particularly vulnerable to the high prices in the housing market, because many rely solely on social security. If they have a savings account, they are getting minimal return on their resources. The added stress of insecure housing takes a toll on their physical, mental, and emotional health. Proposals like the Webster Project are essential to addressing the critically needed supply of affordable housing. Gladstone has little availability of buildable land. Upgrading and using this empty building for housing one of our vulnerable, vulnerable populations solves two problems for Gladstone: by renovating a decaying building in the city and addressing Gladstone's housing inequity. The location is well-suited for elders with public transportation and walkability. Partnering with the Clackamas County Housing Authority for this project is a win-win for supportive housing. The Housing Authority has experience and expertise in providing supportive housing. The city of Gladstone is relieved of the financial burden of finding a solution for housing inequity on its own. I urge your support of the Webster Road application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. And included in your packet tonight was another letter from a group called the Metropolitan Alliance for Common Good, MACG, letter dated March 17th, which also was in favor of the proposal. Would you like me to read that into the record?
I think since it's in the packet, it is already in the record, is enough.
Okay, that's, all right, good. I know that the, the email from Mrs. Burns came in your emails today. You may not have pulled that up, so didn't know if you had it, so and she's here tonight. We owe her the, the courtesy of letting her testify directly. Thank you. So I call your attention to that letter on page 4-58 of the packet from the Metropolitan Alliance for Common Good, who also are commending this, this project. I, I want to give the applicant a chance to respond to the email from Mr. Hildreth. They were concerned about the ongoing maintenance of the project. I know, and vandalism, I know that there had been a recent incident regarding some, according to police report, regarding some young people that lived nearby, but Mr. McMercy, would you like to respond a little bit to, to the concerns that were expressed in that email?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Milch, and we are, we are well aware, since we took possession of the property in 2019, we have actually done a tremendous amount of cleanup, especially the grounds of that site. We have cleared out a lot of the undergrowth, and it had gotten, as you, many of you know, the site had gotten into some pretty significant disrepair with the former owners. We have been working hard with our own county maintenance crews to clean up that area. We have suffered a few break-ins, as was mentioned by Mr. Hildreth in that email, and we are well aware of that. We have contracted evening and weekend services by a third-party patrol company who patrols the site, and we, as you are aware, there was a police report, some young people that had broken into the building on several occasions and done some damage, were taken into custody after that event. I will go forward on the record and say that the Housing Authority, again, we are thrilled to take a building that is currently in disarray and bring it up to be a beautiful new asset for the city of Gladstone, and for our own portfolio and the people we'll serve. So we will double down on our efforts to help clean up the site, and to make sure that we are removing some of those debris that, that may still be around the site, especially in and around that, that former paint storage shed. We take it very seriously, and we are here to be long-term committed, you know, neighbors and partners in the community of Gladstone, and so we will definitely make sure we double down our efforts on the cleanup.
Thank you for that response. Are there any other members of the public in attendance at the meeting who wish to address this, this proposal? Okay, Joy, I'll, I'll turn it back to you. Is it your pleasure, at this point, that we try to resolve the, the similar use issue first, and then move on to the, to the conditional use?
We will.
I actually have a question.
Yes.
So I do like the idea of providing the housing. My, you know, this is probably obvious, you know, my main concern is that we're not providing some of the services that is expected of that type. One of the comments that was brought up by the applicant was the, this is the only... this is the only type that would be allowed in that zone. Can you speak to that?
The way that the Gladstone Municipal Code works is when there is a zone that explicitly allows a type of use. So like the office park zone allows senior housing center. So we are not able to look at senior housing centers on land that is zoned R 7.2 because it is explicitly allowed in a different zone. We can only look at applications for things that are explicitly allowed in the R 7.2 zone. And the R 7.2 zone allows home for the aged as a conditional use application. And the pre-application meeting between Melissa Ahrens and the applicant provided discussion that led the applicant to try to find a way to meet the home for the aged definition based on what the applicant was proposing with housing residents that were 55 and up who were infirm, who had low incomes, extremely low incomes. It seemed the most applicable route to go.
And can you clarify on the reason the multifamily housing wouldn't be allowed in that zone?
The multifamily housing does not appear. The way that Hack described the project, it did not seem similar to an apartment building. Because it has the protection services, the wraparound services, the- Those are not often brought to the site of people's homes. Usually, people in apartments have to go off-site to see a counselor or to see a nutritionist. If they're on hospice or some physical therapy might be coming to them, but they do not necessarily have to have permission to have visitors at a certain time or- They're not provided with as many personal services as Hack proposed for this development. And so it did not- It was included in the arguments so that you all could consider it, but staff did not think that it was similar to what Hack was proposing.
But it was not prohibited from that zone?
Oh, it is.
Only the senior housing center was prohibited from that zone.
Just to clarify, to use the similar use requirements in the zone, we have to show that we are not similar to a use that's allowed in another zone. And multifamily housing is allowed outright in the MR zone. Senior housing center is allowed outright in the business park zone. So we needed to provide information that shows that we were neither senior housing center nor multifamily housing because those were both uses that were allowed outright in other zones. Multifamily housing is not allowed in the zone that we're in, the Webster, that the Webster site's on.
Remind me, what is the zone of that property?
R 2. Single-family residential zone.
So the things which distinguish you from a multifamily housing are the provision of food and shelter and the provision of these personal services. And also the age restrictions, you know, the- So that takes it out of the general category of multifamily housing, makes it more distinctive, and to my mind, brings it to the category of home for the aged.
It's actually the other way around, right? Because they're not providing the food and the services are provided by a third party, right?
That would be the classification of a multifamily housing. It may distinguish themselves from a normal multifamily housing apartment building by adding these additional services. So that takes them out of the category of being just multifamily housing to being something which is distinct from that, which is the category of home for the aged, which has those additional classifications. Any further discussion on this matter?
I see this is very similar in the sense of knowing that it was once the Gladstone Nursing Home and then it was, which is providing care and services. And then the last tenants that, or the last owners of the building were providing services and care to adolescents with behavioral issues and mental health issues. I mean, it's all very similar in the sense of providing care and services. So I'm fine with it being under the category of similar use.
Certainly to you, you're saying it's similar to the uses that have been, that that property-
Yes.
-been put to in the past in that same zoning.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that, just knowing, you know, how many years my grandfather was there and then one of my neighbor's sons was there as an adolescent with some problems. It's always provided care and services that, as long as I've known that location to be. So to me, what they're going to be providing to the aged and for low income, that's care and services.
All right. Commissioner Poole or Commissioner Williams or Commissioner Pat Smith, do you have other comments?
I have a quick one if I could share. I agree with Natalie's thinking and I am familiar with the history of the property. And when one considers this decision, I think we can make it work. And there's a practicality to all of it. If the county doesn't do a good job and doesn't do what it's, what I should say, if the housing authority doesn't do a good job, they'll hear about it and they'll have to make changes and corrections. So I know there's a lot of newness about this. There's a lot of uncertainty out there. But I do think after hearing from the city attorney and really stepping back and looking at it, I think we can make this definition work. I am comfortable with that recommendation. I agree with Commissioner Natalie Smith.
All right. Any other comments from other members of the commission before we take a vote? All right. Joy, if you could put the original motion back up on the screen for us, please. All right. The motion is simple. I move that the commission approve authorization of similar use pursuant to the staff recommendation. And the authorization of similar use is the use as a home for the aged, just to clarify that.
I second that.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Milch, seconded by Commissioner Les Poole. All those in favor? We will do a roll call again. Commissioner Langston has recused himself from this matter, but call the roll for the remaining commissioners, please.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
No.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
I'm going to abstain.
Chair Milch?
Yes. So I believe the vote was four to one with one abstention and one recusal. So the motion carries. So having established that the proposal is now, meets the zoning requirement for the location, let's move on to hearing more about the conditional uses of this particular project. So Joy, I'll return to you for the rest of the staff report.
So you guys are in the mood to move forward and continue this?
Yep.
Yes, please.
Sounds good.
We're enjoying the punishment.
After three months off? So Gladstone Municipal Code provides the planning commission with the authority to grant or deny a conditional use. And it can be pursuant to the authorization of similar use that you just provided for this proposal. When you are considering a proposal, you are supposed to consider whether it is suitable for the proposed site considering the size, shape, location, topography, existence of improvements and natural features. You are supposed to consider whether it is timely, considering the adequacy of transportation systems, public facilities, and services existing or planned for the area that are affected by the use of the property for what is being proposed. The location, size, and functional characteristics of the proposal are such that it can be made reasonably compatible with and have minimal impact on livability and appropriate development of properties in the area and satisfies the policies of the comprehensive plan that apply to the proposed use. So that is what you all are thinking about as you consider the conditional use application. Now, it also says that you can apply conditions to your granting or denial of a conditional use application. And I bring this up because these are not requirements that staff can make a finding to before the planning commission requires them as conditions. So as I reviewed the application materials and as the applicant provided materials, we relied on requirements for design review such as landscaping requirements, such as parking requirements, such as the sign code. And so you'll notice that these are all things that are addressed in the application and they are addressed to serve requirements for design review. This is not a design review application. And so these requirements you may put on this application or you may choose not to. As a conditional use, you have the ability to use additional conditions in your approval. So the site is located at 18,000 Webster Road. And the applicant provided renderings of the modification they would propose on the exterior of the building. And these renderings are included here on the screen for you all to see. Can you see that?
Yes.
As you know, the structure currently exists on the property. There is currently sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer, fire hydrant, sidewalks, and parking on the site. However, you'll notice in the staff report, there were special conditions for most of these items. And these special conditions came from recommendations from the Public Works Department and the Fire Department. The sanitary sewer system, is it adequate? Has it aged? Does it need to be replaced? All of that will require an investigation of the actual site. We don't know at this time whether it needs to be replaced or not until that investigation takes place. The storm sewer, there may need to be an additional easement to access the facilities. The sidewalks are in place. If they need to be expanded, then existing large mature trees may need to be removed. So these are things that may require improvements to meet city standards and are included in the recommendation through special conditions. The existing landscape covers approximately 35% of the site. And the proposal includes maintenance of the existing landscaping with the addition of a walkway and a picnic area. It includes the removal of the basketball court. And so this site plan shows the existing building, the existing trees. Please note that the applicant has had an arborist visit the site and do an assessment of the trees so that they know the ones that need to be removed for health and safety concerns. But the applicant is proposing to add a walkway out to Webster Road, to the sidewalk along Webster Road, to add a walkway down behind to a picnic shelter where the basketball court currently exists. They propose to add a few parking spaces behind the site where there's currently accessory buildings that are in disrepair. They are proposing to repair and update the parking in the front to bring it up to a good quality with lines and pavement quality so that it can be of service to the residents. The special conditions, as I mentioned, include parking signage. The applicant did not provide a description of the signs that they will have on the site. It's my understanding that there was previously a freestanding sign that they may choose to replace at a future date. And when there are designs available, they will be submitting a land use application for that sign. That is one of the special conditions. Lighting, there will be lighting on the site as always. Per the Gladstone Municipal Code, we would encourage the lighting not to leave the site or be it distracting to drivers that drive by. As always, ADA access is of concern, especially with the population that the applicant is proposing to serve, being age 55 and older or infirm or and infirm. Sidewalks, they are adding a few landscaped sidewalks, but the sidewalks along Webster Road exist. And then there's the storm drainage, the water, the fire suppression, and the sanitary sewer, which is explained by the department in their comments at the end of the staff report. And the special conditions address those concerns. The applicant provided a set of visuals that included the site plans. And I would like to share those and go through those with you all so you can have them in your memory.
Go ahead.
And I would assume that the applicant, following my presentation, will also go over these visuals to answer anything that I may have missed in my presentation. This is the proposed site plan that I put up there in case that they wanted to see it during the discussion of authorization of similar use. But because it does not pertain necessarily to the use within the building, it comes into play here when you all are thinking about conditions of approval. it comes into play here when you all are thinking about conditions of approval. I would say that the applicant mentioned the timeliness of this application, which is one of the criteria that you have to consider. There is a housing crisis in Clackamas County and Gladstone. There is a, a need for additional affordable housing units that is documented by the Housing Needs Analysis that will, that is in draft form, that will receive a public engagement and tweaking before it comes before you as a document to refer on to City Council. But there is documentation that there is a housing crisis in Gladstone, and serving the elders of Gladstone and Clackamas County is a need that is identified in the Regional Housing Needs Analysis that was completed in 2019. The Comprehensive Plan identifies goals in line with this application, including remodeling existing structures and preserving existing structures, adding additional housing to the supply, and protecting natural resources. By modifying an existing home, we are reducing impervious surface and keeping the waterways of Gladstone from receiving additional stormwater runoff that could lead to environmental issues. And so this proposal that takes an existing structure and remodels it to meet the needs of Gladstone residents, as identified by the, the recent Housing Needs Analysis, is timely and meets the goals of the Gladstone Municipal, or the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan. If you would like, I'm happy to bring up the staff report for you all to see if you would like that to be what is on the screen tonight.
Let's go ahead and bring, bring that up, yes.
No, I was just gonna, I was waiting for you to respond. I was just making sure you were there.
Okay, yes, I'm here. I, I think the, you know, presumably the commissioners have all read the report and the recommendations and the analysis of the various aspects of the, of the project. So you want to present that in some particular order?
Well, the, the first part of the findings deals with the conditional use that's allowed in R 7.2. As we previously noted, nursing homes and homes for the age is a conditional use allowed in that zoning district with the authorization of similar use that the Planning Commission provides tonight. The, this applicant, the application can be considered in this zoning district.
Okay, so we've, we've jumped that hurdle already.
Yep. The minimum lot area for Home for the Age, which is another use, is 7,200 square feet. And the property is 2.2 acres or 95,830 square feet, so this area is met. The, there are setback requirements, and it is important to note that the building is existing. So no changes are proposed to expand the footprint of the structure. The existing setbacks that were shown on the site plan include a 20 feet setback from the front property line, which matches the 20 foot, or exceeds the minimum 15 foot setback. It's 26.3 feet from the rear property line and 26.5 feet from the side property line. So even though it's a large building, the property is large enough to facilitate these setbacks being met as proposed and as the existing structure sits. The height of the building is not being modified, and the site plan submitted shows that it's 16 feet tall, which is less than the, the maximum of 35 feet. So the dimensional standards for the R 7.2 district are met. And we get into the authorization to grant or deny a conditional use. And that is where I would like to bring up the excerpts from the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan. In Land Use Section, residential uses include allowing churches, schools, and similar facilities in residential areas only when and where compatible with surrounding uses, and allow housing types ranging from low to high density units, providing for variation in the design of housing units. I brought that up because it's, as we look at the neighborhood, there are churches on two sides of the site. And when we consider the residential areas, we need to determine whether this use is compatible with it. The Home for the Age, is it compatible with the surrounding areas? Is it compatible with the existing churches and the street of low residential homes to the north? It identifies that low-density residential districts should be served by local streets, and non-residential uses should be located on collectors and minor arterials to minimize noise and traffic impact. This Home for the Age is a higher density than what I would consider low-density residence. But Webster is a minor arterial, and so it would qualify as a non-residential use located on a collector or minor arterial as encouraged by the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan. In the Housing Section of the Comprehensive Plan, Policy 3 is to promote the supply of adequate housing. And providing additional housing is, is needed right now. Policy 4 is promoting the upgrading and preservation of existing housing units and neighborhoods with special emphasis on historically significant homes. While I have not seen a historical significance to this existing structure, it is an existing building that has been used in the past for multiple housing units. And so it appears to, this proposal appears to meet Policy 4, where neighborhood rehabilitation and improvement is occurring, using federal funds, actually. The tax, the, both the housing bond and the, the tax credits can be used to rehabilitate this building to be used for low-income residents. Therefore, staff find that it's, it's an appropriate use for the residential areas, and the proposed use meets the needs of the Comprehensive Plan and the city. Would you like me to go in detail regarding the, the hours? The applicant provided an example lease in their application packet, and I believe that was included in your staff report for you all to see. And that was an example from another site that had, the Housing Authority manages or owns. But it was a good example of what they anticipate having for this location with a few tweaks that would be required, including the parking, which is identified as one of the, the special conditions that they would modify the lease to address the parking on the site.
Did you have a copy of that included in our report?
I thought so.
I didn't see it.
You did not see it?
I didn't, but doesn't mean it wasn't here, but.
Well, I'm gonna stop sharing and scroll through so I don't give you guys headaches.
Looks something like a lease then, or, or hours of operation?
It looks like a lease.
I don't recall seeing it.
Okay.
Neither did I.
Got a, got a question on what we're talking about here is, is this next vote that we're discussing, is it our permission giving everything a full go-ahead?
Yes.
That's what we're doing? I just, I've got still too many questions when it comes to the, what there, what we're putting into our area. And maybe that's, I'm going outside my realm, but, you know, if it was like they had, when I kind of thought, I thought it was 65 and older, I thought, hey, this is great. People have really, when you're still in your 50s to 60, you know, 55 to 65 is still young. I mean, I gotta say that, but when they, when you're hitting in your 60s, I thought it was really going for the senior people, the retired people. Not, and, and I'm seeing, I'm hearing something totally different on this, and that's worrisome for me on what we're really, what I thought we were really trying to accomplish with this. That's one of them, and do they, do they have curfews? I mean, are they, are people gonna be coming and going all times of the night? I mean, you get the wrong person, people in there, it can really cause some real issue, just like anywhere, any rental, whatever. But I'm just saying, it could really cause us some real, some turmoil that's gonna really rattle some cages, and we're the ones allowing it to happen, or at least get through this next step. And I guess I still have questions on not having enough answers.
Well, it, this would be a good opportunity to allow the applicant to present on their application so that maybe they can answer some of those questions.
Can, can we do something that we could ask, like with mine? I'm, I'm more worried about people coming and going. I'm more worried about age. Can we see with, with our commissioners what quick questions they have so that they can kind of jot them down so that when they take the helm, they're able to go through kind of these questions and give us some quick answers? Is that feasible?
Let me propose something here. It's 9:13 now. We had announced the time of, of conclusion of about 9:30. You know, we can go beyond that if it's, if the, if the commission's willing. We can try to get as much information tonight and close the public hearing and then continue to deliberate at another date. Or we can try to continue and both get the information and do our deliberations and decision-making tonight. Let me put that out there and see how, how the commissioners feel about it.
Chair Milch, Commissioner Pat Smith, and I, I appreciate your first, your first offer to be the better of the two. Anything we do in the next 15 minutes to try to get it just done will be, in my mind, be a rush, simply to arrive at a decision. And as the prior commissioner just said, we have, there's a lot of unanswered questions. If Commissioner Williams has them and I have them, I'm sure others do too. So I would recommend that we close the public hearing and take this up at our next meeting.
So that would mean we need to continue the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing.
And do both. Would it be helpful to get a little bit of more information tonight and shoot for a 9:30 conclusion?
I would, my preference would be the 9:30 conclusion, and also that we are going to have to continue this because I do believe there's a lot more questions. And, you know, I, I mean, what was written looks good, but I think all of us as planning commissioners want a little bit more detail because it can be rather vague what's, what we're currently looking at. That's my opinion.
Is, is, is there a way that we can present our questions? I know we'll have more as one leads to the next, but we can present them with our questions so that they know what we really need? I mean, they can kick them off the top of their head, or is it better just to move forward and everybody just keep them and we'll deal with it at that time? You guys know better than I do.
Well, any, any gathering of evidence or any deliberation needs to be done in a public meeting. But if you raise some questions tonight and we schedule a date for a continued hearing, then, then applicant and the staff will be prepared to answer those questions going forward rather than be, you know, sort of blindsided with them the next time. So it might help to get those questions out there. Let staff and applicant know what the concerns are and let them address them specifically when we have more time at a future meeting.
So Michael, why don't we go ahead and have everybody get their questions dealt with right now and then decide whether to continue or, or end it, once you've got your questions on the.
I'm, I'm agreeable with that. So Commissioner Williams, you, you said you had some questions regarding hours and whether people were free to come and go.
Hours, right. Are they free to come and go? I really thought it was gonna be for our 65 and older, which, you know, the, the lovely lady ended up said, we need the senior housing. And I really thought it was for senior housing, and I didn't realize it, you know, where I, you know, people, everybody needs help, but I thought it would be a, a situation that, that's where it was going, and I was all in for that. And I just kind of reading into it, I learned a little more as time went on.
Yeah, I think perhaps the expansion 55 and older doesn't mean that it's going to be between 55 and 64. My impression is that there will still be a substantial number of people who are over 65, and that those who are younger than 65 and are housed in this would be housed because they meet certain criteria of need, which sort of makes them similar to people who we would, we used to consider old, over 60. I'm over 65 myself. I gotta watch if updates categories and generalization. But that, that's, that's more of a statement of opinion. It'd be better to hear this. I mean, Debbie, do you want to respond to that briefly?
I, I think actually maybe if Stephen wants to respond to that, that might make more sense.
Yeah, so the answer to that question is exactly what you were stating, Chair Milch, is that, that the, the age of 55 to 64, we anticipate that there may be some tenants who qualify or meet the criteria to live in this housing, but that it is not restricted to between 55 and 64. It is 55 and older. And we know from our own analysis and our own data, and frankly, the vast clientele that we serve already, that there are significant needs for those that are 65 and well beyond for this type of housing. So we anticipate that, that we are going to have the lion's share of those folks, if you will, who are probably older than 55 unless, as you mentioned, Chair, they meet that specific criteria that would have them somewhere in between 55 and 64.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. So let's hear other questions that people have that you would like the applicant and the staff to come prepare to answer if we had a continued hearing date.
I have one, Chairman Milch.
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
Back to Bruce Hildreth's letter. I'm wondering who ultimately is gonna be responsible for the property. Clackamas County's owned for the last couple of years, and I, I wouldn't say they've done a judicious job of maintaining that place, and I realize it's all by itself, and there's nobody living there, and you can't prevent kids from breaking in, but there's still refuse on the property. It hasn't been maintained, and I'm, and I have some concerns about that continuing, not the break-ins and everything, but the kind of semi-shoddy maintenance that, just from the outside looking in, no personal, nothing personal taken there. But who's responsible? What are the standards that are gonna be implied to maintain the property so it's a valued member of our community?
Thank you. I think we had a partial answer to that question earlier tonight. tonight, but we can, uh, if you want, come, come prepared to address that in more detail next time. That would be helpful. Uh, other commissioners have questions?
I think we could address that question now. I mean, I would like to try and see this wrapped up tonight if there's not a ton of questions. Yeah. Do you want to talk to that one also?
I, I, I want to be sensitive to everyone's time here, but I, I think your, Commissioner, your, your question was whether or not the underlying ownership would rely, would remain with the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Yes, that is the intent, that we would own and operate this property for decades to come. Um, you know, during the life cycle of, uh, development like this, we put significant money into project reserves and onsite, uh, property maintenance. I think that what has been, um, what has been experienced in the last year that we've owned it, we purchased the building, and I believe it was June of last year, is that we've been in a holding pattern of we, as we've done building investigation, and clearly, even though we have done a significant amount of cleanup, there, there's more cleanup that we could do. Uh, so just going back to what I said earlier, we'll double down on our efforts there, but I, we will maintain this building to, uh, very, very high level. It's a requirement of the financial investment in it from the state and those that are providing things like low-income housing tax credits. We must meet minimum property standards, and also, we want to be good neighbors and good shepherds of the housing that we built. We want to maintain our reputation, which is a very good reputation, and so we want to make sure that we have a great open dialogue with the community around us, and part of that is maintaining a healthy and beautiful asset in the community.
All right. Thank you for reiterating those, uh, that information.
Question, if I could, clarification. The county will own it, it will be operated by a third party. I, you know, this is, much of what we're doing here is not new. We're not reinventing a lot of wheels. So, I appreciate hearing that it will, the buildings will be maintained, and we'll meet the standards, but I think the big question was about the property in general. I have no doubt that you folks will meet standards, but there isn't a comfort level in, uh, what happens as the economy drags along. What's the first thing that goes out the door? Maintenance. What guarantees do we have that we're not going to have maintenance issues beyond the buildings, because it's, it's a nice piece of property. Um, and because of the lay of the land, I, I have no doubt you're gonna make nice. But what happens if a property manager defaults, or we have a problem? Does, in other words, does the maintenance get interrupted, or is the county actually maintaining the property while someone, while another entity is, is doing the actual, uh, all the disturbance?
Mr. McMullen, you want to, uh, McMurtry, sorry?
That's okay, that's okay. No, and I appreciate the que, I appreciate the question. The, the, you know, this building will be owned by the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. We will have a, as of, you know, we will have a third-party management company working in conjunction with Housing Authority staff, which may include our own maintenance staff, um, for the long-term operation of this building. And, I mean, we have an asset management team that manages our third-party management company to the highest expectations. A, as far as your concerns about, uh, maintenance going away should the economy turn down, the financial structuring of the way this deal will come together, and will be required from the equity investor that's involved in it, is that we contribute to what's called replacement reserves, and part of the financial stack, so that we're required to put money aside for things like maintenance, for durability concerns, there may be, you know, windows and siding and roofs and things like that over time, as well as landscaping and overall general maintenance. So, I, I mean, I'm open to suggestions from this party, from this group as well, as to something that would help you better, um, feel more comfort in, in how we might guarantee, I think is what you said, that the building is maintained. Um, I, I, you know, we certainly don't want to be in violation. We won't be in violation.
Right. And, and I asked the question, I, I, I'm pretty comfortable that you're going to, to do some good things with the structure. My concern was more about the grounds and, you know, what, and noise or buffering, you think, you know, effects on the, on the neighborhood, and, and I ask about the maintenance because the, we don't need to get into, it's not germane to tonight's discussion, but the previous owner, uh, it pretty sorted, sorted conclusion to, to, uh, let me call it a grand ex, there, and, and so for the reason you had here, ask hands and things, certainly, is because the previous owner went out of business, and, and I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, I, I think we're getting a little bit.
Feeling of, you know, who is actually responsible for me? And so, I, is it facility? I understand, I've done property management. My only real question is, is your managers in charge of the maintenance of the grounds and hiring groundskeepers, or does the county care of that?
The, 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 the responsibility would be of the third-party management company to hire the groundskeeping. We would then have oversight of that, and should we need to, should we need to augment it, then we would commit county staff to that and request that we go in a different direction.
Yeah, and I, I'm not trying to, you know, beat this to death, but it's only as good as the management folks. Uh, I mean, not only as good, but, um, it, it's really in their hands, and obviously, uh, that you're owning the property, and you've got a substantial investment, some of the money and some of the requirements are, you take good care of it. And I wanted clarity as to who's actually maintaining the grounds, and if it's your manager, then we know that, um, because I'm not trying to be difficult here, just trying to head off some of the things that have passed, and, and I'm not here to say no, or throw rocks at anything we're doing. Thank you.
All right. Um, well, we've reached that, you know, we're getting very close to the nine thirty timeframe. Um, it, it sounds like, from the comments of some of the commissioners, that, uh, your preference is to, uh, continue this matter, uh, to continue the public hearing, so that we can continue to hear testimony from the applicant and the staff, uh, and, um, and members of the community as well at a later date. Um, as I, let me look at the calendar. Normally, the Planning Commission meets on the third Tuesday of the month, so if we were to have another meeting, the, the date on my calendar now would be Tuesday, June sixteenth. Uh, that's the next normal date for a Planning Commission meeting. Um, is it the pleasure of the, uh, of the commission that we continue this matter to that date?
Can we get some clarification? The people who asked questions, were your questions answered satisfactorily? Do you need more time?
Well, I, I'd like to mention to, uh, Mr. McMurtry that, uh, the two people that testified tonight are both people that I know personally, and I respect both, and I have been, and respect both of their, uh, uh, points of, uh, discussion tonight. Mr. Hildreth, uh, while you, while you or the county or the third party, they can't be held responsible for criminal activity on that property. They, I think he can be held responsible for not cleaning up paint cans that are dumped all over the place for an extended period of time, which I believe is what Mr. Hildreth mentioned. I'd just like to have it clear in my own mind that that's not gonna happen, that the ground, not just the building, but the grounds are gonna be, be maintained, uh, in the same standard as the rest of the community, and I think that's what Commissioner Poole's asking also.
We have in the past had conditional uses, or conti, uh, conditional, uh, things on our approvals that require maintenance, uh, specifically with some of the auto locations, right? There's no reason we couldn't do that.
Correct, and, and that can, we can specify exactly on the maintenance of the landscaping as well.
That, that would be great, because it, it is a large piece of property, and it's nice that it's got some, some, uh, it's not so, so, uh, you know, it's not something where eighty-eight percent of it is, is impervious, so being a nice piece of property, of course, it also, we're in Gladstone, and it's gonna have maintenance issues, and we've just been disappointed before, so I appreciate the response, and, and I, uh, also would just reiterate what, uh, Commissioner Patrick Smith said. Thank you very much.
So if we add that condition, uh, does then, anybody feel like they still need to carry it over, or are we good to do it tonight?
What condition are we adding?
How would you word it, Joy?
Maintenance of landscaping and the structure. And I, I had not thought about specifics beyond that.
I think we normally add in perpetuity.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Are, are you suggesting, Malakai, that if we were to make that, uh, addition, that you would be willing to, uh, look at the conditional use recommendation from staff and, uh, and make a vote on it tonight?
Yeah.
All right. Other commissioners, would you be willing to go to ten o'clock and see if we can, uh, get this done tonight?
It's okay here.
Okay, let's, let's keep moving. Let's, let's see what we can do. Um, Joy, perhaps to accelerate this a little bit, without wanting to diminish the importance of, you know, of dealing with individual items, were there aspects of the, uh, of the conditions, uh, that, uh, raised any red flag for you? Uh, I believe in reading it, there was nothing where you, you didn't say it met, it met the use. Um, unlike the, the gas station thing that we had to look at, we had a couple of things we had to, to, to tweak a little bit, but you did not have anything in that nature there, uh, for this project?
Just a couple of easements that are required, um, to meet the City of Gladstone requirements, and, um, a verification that the water and sewer systems are in good use, that the fire suppression is adequate to meet the current requirements, um, and the, there was nothing out of the ordinary, um, that I saw.
So these were things that probably came up either from the Fire Department or the Public Works Department, uh, that would be part of the process of moving forward. Uh, they called them to our attention, but they're not sort of specific code requirements, they are more, um, city requirements.
They are items that I would encourage you to consider as conditions of your approval.
Okay. That's, that clarification is helpful.
With the addition of landscaping maintenance and, um, building maintenance in perpetuity while Hack maintains ownership, um, of the property.
All right.
So, do we want to continue with the public hearing, or should we close that and have our discussion?
I think we've given, uh, the applicant a couple of different opportunities, although, you know, you were kind of put on the defensive a couple of times, but I think, uh, between the staff report, your report, uh, the applicant's report in our packet was very consistent with the report prepared by staff, uh, as to point by point, uh, the, uh, you know, meeting the various criteria. And that's really the task of the Planning Commission. Again, as I stated in my introduction, is to determine whether we meet the criteria of the code, um, for this project. So, do you, does staff have a motion for us to, uh, that we could amend with some additional conditions and consider tonight?
I believe we may want to reach out and see if there's any other testimony from the public, and if the applicant needs to have any rebuttal.
Okay, uh, let me ask that question. Are there other members of the public here tonight who would like to testify on this matter? Uh, either proponents or opponents? I see a lot of names on the screen that I don't recognize, but they may be part of the, uh, the staff of the Housing Authority. Okay. Um, and, Doug, does it, does the applicant feel, uh, the need to rebut any of the other comments made earlier? You've, you've commented directly on some of them already.
Oh, I don't believe that we do. In the interest of time, I mean, we, uh, had a presentation that we were gonna provide, but in the interest of time, we feel that our application stands on its own, and the staff report that addresses all of the approval criteria and show that we are in compliance. So, um, we'd like to try and wrap this up tonight, and so we'll move on from testimony in the interest of keeping things moving.
I respect that, and, and I appreciate the consistency of the two reports. It, it's very helpful to see that staff and an applicant work together, uh, on this project, as you, as they did earlier on the other one we considered tonight, and, uh, a, a lot of these things get worked out at that level, and when they come to us, uh, it makes our decision easier when, uh, when the criteria are described in great detail to us. Uh, so, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second your motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on this. Uh, Commissioner Malakai made the motion, Commissioner Pat Smith seconded. All in favor of closing the public hearing, indicate with a thumbs up on your screen.
All right.
All right. I believe it passes. Uh, the public hearing is closed. So, uh, we move on now to, uh, let's, let's have a motion, uh, from staff, and then we can deliberate the specifics of that motion.
Do we need to change the wording at all since we've made that one change?
I would recommend that you add with conditions as modified during the public hearing, um, and pursuant to staff recommendation.
Okay. Uh, I move that the commission approved conditional use Z zero zero seven one dash two zero dash C with conditions as modified pursuant to the, uh, public hearing and to the staff recommendation.
I second. Commissioner Smith.
All right, and, um, let me ask a question. Joy, you, you're listing resolution on here. Uh, does this require any different kind of a vote from us? Uh, I know when the city council does some, some matters, they require two votes.
This provides you with a, a section of the code that you are acting within.
Okay.
And so, section one seven point nine four point oh six oh parentheses two H of the Gladstone Municipal Code, um, gives the Planning Commission the right to approve conditional land use applications.
So this is a reference as to our authority to do this, but the motion as, uh, as written or as read by, uh, Commissioner Malakai is adequate to, to take action, assuming we make the modifications as you recommend. All right, it's been moved and seconded that we, uh, approve the conditional use with the conditions, uh, including additional conditions generated in tonight's meeting. Any additional discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Langston has recused himself from this, so we will begin with Commissioner Natalie Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Malakai?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
I'm not in as big a rush as some of the staff are, and I'm, I'm just not really comfortable with some of this, and I, I'm not opposed to it, I'm struggling to make up my mind, and I believe it would be wise for me to abstain, which I don't do very often. I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Milch?
Yes. So I believe there are five votes in favor, one abstention, one recusal, uh, the motion passes. So I believe there are five votes in favor, one abstention, one recusal. The motion passes.
Okay, I will draft up a decision that adds a maintenance requirement for the landscape in the building. And send that over to Chair Milch for his review and signature.
Thank you very much.
If I could, that would be great. That would be great. And I think the language that we used for the auto dealers was more than adequate. We don't need to make it complex.
Okay.
All right. That's helpful. Thank you. All right. Well, those are the main items we had on our agenda. Originally for this meeting, we were going to consider one slight modification of the code. That's not in there anymore. I think we'll do that another day. I don't believe we have any more business from the public tonight. Is that correct?
None that I'm aware of.
All right. I want to thank the members of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County for coming tonight, for putting up with a little more complicated a hearing than perhaps you had expected, but I'm pleased that our city is going to be involved with a project that's this important. This commission has, as stated in its own goals, the importance of addressing the housing shortage here in our community and some of us weren't sure how much the county was going to get involved in our city when we, when they began to, to work on this issue. And we didn't think we'd ever have an opportunity to be this much involved and make this significant a role in what's happening. So I think it's, it's a, we're pleasantly surprised to be able to be playing a part in this important work that you do. And we will, of course, you, you know, we'll keep an eye on what happens, but we are hopeful that you will live up to, you know, what you've told us tonight and that, and this is something that we can all be proud of. And it will meet a real need in our community. So thank you for coming tonight and sharing that.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Chair Milch?
Yes.
I would like to say that hopefully before you open and are able to provide housing, that you get, you let the Gladstone Planning Commission have a tour of the new facility.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right. Joy, I want to thank you for preparing these reports and for, you know, guiding us through the, the difficult moments here and helping us to work with the nuances that were required for dealing with this tonight. I thank all the members of the public that came to attend. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 The meeting is adjourned. You may all leave your Zoom meeting. Thank you.